We've got about one more minute before we get started. There's two more entering and as soon as they come in, I'll call this meeting to order. Okay, well, I am 7:30 on my clock. It looks like all the members of the council are present. It is Tuesday, July 21st. Welcome to this week's committee of the whole meeting. Before we begin, I do have a couple of quick comments, announcements and housekeeping items here. As always, and a reminder for those who are joining us via Zoom or in the city council chambers, you will be afforded the opportunity for public comments to address the city council on matters that are exclusively on tonight's agenda. After the city council has the opportunity to discuss them with staff. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to the meeting, they'll be given the opportunity to provide public comment as well in accordance to the procedures that are applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting at the city council. Namely, those members of the public must have signed in before the start of the meeting. Public comment will also be given the opportunity to those who are joining us on the conference line as long as they provided their contact credentials and the subject matter for which they wanted to speak about before the deadline is noted on this evening's agenda. Written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting, those will also be addressed as well by the city council as well as being discussed if necessary. We do ask that persons wishing to address the city council will keep their comments to five minutes or less. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity in any form will not be tolerated. With that, we do have five, six agenda items that are up for this evening's discussion. And as a result, I think we should go ahead and jump right in with the first one. And the first one again is longstanding item here, the G1 discussion. So Manager Crumstock, why don't I start with you and you can bring us up to speed on some of the the latest conversations that happened from the previous committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, this is the newest draft of the draft ordinance and it's obviously still in their places. Since we've actually been talking G1, obviously, the mayor has met with Shelby's and what's before you is a discussion between Public Works Assistant Director Joel Carlton, Public Works Director Rob Horn, City Attorney Melissa Wolf and Alderman John Diastis, where they took and looked at specifically a few sections in the document and now what's before you are the 12 items that are in there. The rest of the document you've already seen in the past, the 900 feet is in there. Obviously, now that we're down to 12 items or 12 establishments, if you want to consider it that. There is one typo if we get through tonight and obviously it comes to the city council. On one page, there's just a very simple, instead of 13, it's actually 12 items in front of you. And obviously, it sets up what would be happening with the current ones. Obviously, they just get some of the transfers and then anybody coming in new would have the new process that's in place at that point in time. So with that, that's a very quick summary of what's happened since that point in time and also hopefully this G1 discussion will bring it to the full council with the draft that you see with just obviously Squidler's error and anything else that comes out of it. But we've been talking about this. This is the newest items that are before you and if anybody else would like to talk about the 12, that's perfectly fine. And obviously, City Attorney Melissa Wolf can talk about some of the nuances in this document.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Crumstock. The manager's summary was, you know, very sufficient and identified the general meeting and changes that were made. The changes that came from our meeting with Alderman Diastis are identified and read. So you can see those impact the criteria. In addition, it's my understanding that as you see the ordinance today, you can see that the zoning ordinance is attached as an exhibit to this ordinance. And it's my understanding that the actual zoning amendment was heard before the planning and zoning commission already. So, and there was a recommendation to approve the zoning changes. So what that means is that these provisions, when it comes to the council for approval at the city council level, both the changes to the liquor code along with the changes to the zoning code can be made at the city council at one time as opposed to on two separate occasions. And that was the only other addition that I would have.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. At this time, I will leave it to council by raising of the hand here if there's any comments or follow-up from what's transpired since Alderman Diastis had the time to meet with staff and Attorney Wolf. See Alderman O'Brien, your hands up. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, first of all, thanks to everybody. I know we've been talking about this since the year, 14 months I've been part of the council. Just real, a couple of things. I know we've discussed the 900 feet, but since Manager Crumstock did reference a meeting that you had with Shelby's, can we just confirm, since that has been a discussion numerous times over the last, are they counted as new? Because I know that it's clear that in the write-ups now, anybody that currently has a gaming license that would be considered gaming cafe. So it's the Isabelle's, it's Daisy's, Lulu's and Sally's. They are already established, have their credentials from the city. So when we say the new ones, let's say this gets through tonight, it gets through the July meeting, so it's effective July, or I'm sorry, August, whatever the second meeting date is. Are we considering Shelby's as new? That they would be applicable to the new rules? Are we considering them in the draft now with a cap of five for gaming cafes? That's the first question I have.
Who's your question directed toward?
Oh, yourself or Manager Crumstock? Because I wasn't aware, clearly, we don't have to be aware of all the meetings, but I wasn't aware of any additional conversations with Shelby's. So I'm just wondering what has been communicated to them as I've been talking with our constituents, making sure that anybody in right now, in business now is not going to be impacted. And that's very clearly stated. I already, I talked to Attorney Wolf earlier today. But going forward, since we're saying new, how are we considering Shelby's? Because I know numerous council members have had questions on this in the past.
Okay, so for clarification, my meeting with Shelby's or Charity Johns was an introductory meeting. This is the first time we've ever gotten to meet or speak, for that matter, since I was sworn in on May 14th. As far as I'm concerned, that was an introductory meeting and they're brand new to me.
Okay, so that's fair. That's why I do, I think that that'll answer my question. I'm still mixed on the 900 feet because I know we started a half-mile radius and it seems like we're adjusting ordinance to accommodate something that's not even established there yet. But if we can set that as the bar, Mr. Mayor, I fully support it. Is that we would consider them new, so they would have to come to us, back to planning, zoning, pay the, I think it's a total of $650 in special use permit fees, that they would be under the new guidelines that we're not counting them as existing? Because I know that was some of the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Crumstock, your hand is up. If you have something to interject, go ahead.
Just to clarify for Alderman O'Brien, they would be considered new as what was mentioned because they have no liquor license at this point. They have not gone before the city council for any other item. So it would really be the new ordinance that they would be passed because they don't have any G1, they don't have an A1, A2, A3. So they are considered completely new into the pipe.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, that was the one question. And that really does, I mean, I, that was an understanding here. And I'm comfortable with that with some angst is at least we know the five could potentially could be in. We're going to cap it at five. And then just my second question is what I raised last time is if we do look at the sheer number, the way it's drafted now, 100% comfortable with the five gaming cafes because originally was at six, but we excluded the one from the zone four. So we're at capped five, the way it's proposed now. But if we look at the accessories too, that's going up to 17 gaming cafes for, or gaming establishments. Apologies, gaming establishments for a town of 25,000 people. I just would like to see as if we do move forward with consensus on five gaming cafes as drafted, that we could really consider looking at a cap of 10 instead of 12 for the gaming establishments? Because that doubles us right now. That's, that's just for discussion or thought. That's my opinion is that 17 places with video gaming just might be a lot between five gaming cafes and 12 restaurant establishments. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'll leave that discussion up to the council in their entirety, representing the wards that the residents live in for this. I feel like we do shoot ourselves in the foot to reduce the accessory license, which is clearly defines a restaurant that has gaming terminals. And this was entirely conceived for restaurants to give them a leg up against competitors in our neighboring communities, but also giving our families and residents some entertainment, additional entertainment. And I think if we wanted to reduce it somewhere, it should be actually with the gaming cafes.
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to that. That's why I asked if we're counting five as in or would be new. I'm not opposed to capping it where we're at at four now, Mr. Mayor. I don't oppose that at all on the gaming cafe side.
Yeah.
I'm with you on that one.
We are 6.4 square miles or something like that and to have five gaming cafes in that.
I'm with you. I can, I can understand that. Thank you.
So, thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Other members of the council, feedback input? Okay. Alderman Sanoika.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to clarify as well because one of the establishments had also reached out to me and had stated that they are intending to use the establishment primarily for gaming. And I guess what I would want to communicate to the council is or to staff regarding the, any communications that they've had with this establishment that's trying to open up in the city of Rolling Meadows. From my understanding, they had been trying to open up before we began this discussion earlier in the year and in 2019, when they were, when the understanding was that the establishment would be a restaurant with a, with a gaming accessory, more or less, although it wasn't explicit because of the kitchen language and that sort of thing. And so I guess my question would be for staff and for the mayor, if during their, during your conversations, there was any allusion to the, to that original intent? Because it seems like, aside from COVID, there'd be nothing else that would prevent this establishment from opening up in the first place, regardless of whether they get the liquor license.
So I let staff jump in and I can fill you in on my conversation with Shelby's like regarding that sentiment around being a restaurant.
Thank you.
So I think your question is really about one location off of Algonquin Road. There was no guarantees, there was no sentiment, there was nothing else. And again, there was no provided what kind of room would be, anything else. So again, for an establishment said, oh, staff talked to them and felt comfortable? No. And we always bring back in the old way with the G1 and the liquor. So it's very transparent what's going on. If they have a liquor, then the G1 was coming back at that point in time. So even when we meet with folks, it's always, here's what the process is. And again, it all depends on what the council decides with the old G1, with this new ordinance, how it's actually, if it's going to go through the planning and zoning, if it needs to go into that process. But again, we always sit down and make it very clear what the process is. And if someone goes to the game, video gaming or the gaming board and gets their own stuff, that's on their own. They never told or anything else like that.
And Alderman Sanoika, from my conversations, and I can't speak to any historic conversations as far as if they were going to come in as, you know, a gaming accessory type license where they were a restaurant establishment with secondary gamings. But for me, Ms. Johns was extremely forthright in admitting that Shelby's is a gaming cafe. There's no two bones about it, but she did say that it is by far one of the best gaming cafes that Rolling Meadows would have in its community, stellar in terms of quality, service, et cetera. And so they are purely a gaming cafe and they would not allow for minors to enter. Anything further from that, from me and the conversation with Shelby's? Alderman Sanoika.
Not this time. That appears to be similar to the discussion that I had had as well, one-on-one. So with them. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Alderman Budmats, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the question is, following along with Alderman O'Brien, we're, we're calling the existing gaming cafes like Lulu's and, and current ones, we're going to call those restaurants now? So that means we have the opportunity for four more gaming cafes? I'm trying to understand, or can we have a total cap on licenses? And then change that cap after, after businesses are reestablished gaming cafes? Or how does, how do we actually start calling a spade a spade? And classify the businesses for what they are? Can somebody help me understand?
Yes, Mayor, I can answer that question. So the, the regulations that are set forth here allow for the identification of the existing establishments as either a GA licensed establishment, meaning an accessory, or a GC licensed establishment, meaning a gaming cafe. So those existing establishments that are gaming cafes under the guidelines that we've established here will be identified as such at the passage of these ordinances. And so I believe presumably there are four gaming cafes existing at this time based upon the criteria and the evaluation of the establishment against those criteria. Those four gaming cafes will be, will take up the four licenses that are allowed for these ordinances. In addition, those existing establishments will be granted administrative special use permits by the council so that they are lawfully, you know, using their establishment according to the guidelines in these ordinances as well. So we, they will, we will not have five more gaming cafes in addition to those that are existing today.
Thank you very much.
Anything further, Alderman Budmats?
Yeah, just at the last meeting that we voted to have two gaming cafes in the Plum Grove District. I'm of the personal opinion that, that the market will not, that market, which could not even sustain one White Hen pantry without going out of business, is going to have a difficult time supporting two gaming cafes. And so to me, I think it's foolishness on our part to approve a second license in that corridor when there's nothing on Algonquin Road in an area that probably could support a second gaming cafe. But, but I will, I will acquiesce to the council's vote, but considering the fact that we, we approved a license for Sally's and they've barely even been able to open for two or three weeks before COVID hit, I think I have a feeling that we're going to put them out of business. So I just wanted to make sure that those people who fought so valiantly for that particular establishment realize what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Bessesi, I see your hand is up. Floor is yours.
Yes, I just want to clarify. So I'm very much in favor of the capping it at five. I like the way that this has been rewritten and everything. I think all the changes are really good. The one question I have now for accessory, so once this is passed, four of the current establishments will be moved over to a cafe. And that would leave, what, eight that we currently have as accessory? Is that correct?
Well, we'll get the numbers for you, Alderman Bessesi, but that is correct in the sense that you will be subtracting out those gaming cafe establishments from the gaming accessory establishments. So under these numbers here, there will be a total of 17, you know, different locations that will have gaming, whether it's a gaming cafe or another type of use like a restaurant or a bar.
But, but right now, we currently have, it's either 11 or 12, right?
Yes, and I'll look at the, I'll look for the numbers, but that's, I'll look for the number of establishments, but that's correct.
So basically, from, from the time we did that map, we're, you know, the map where there were the 12 different dots on it, a certain number in each one of the zones or areas. We've now increased the total number of establishments between last meeting and this meeting.
Not, not between last meeting and this meeting. This has been basically consistent throughout these committee of the whole meetings. It will allow for more establishments than were previously allowed, you know, under the G1 initial evaluation when we, you know, the first time around when we tried to amend this. But this hasn't increased from the last COW meeting to this COW meeting. The last few COW meetings have had this same number. The, the philosophy behind the GA license being that it was to allow those existing other uses like a restaurant or a bar to be able to supplement their income and have a better economic opportunity. So, but it, because, and because those establishments are completely different from gaming cafes.
Okay, I, I don't know. I'm thinking they went up. So, so basically, the map that I have from the prior meeting does not have 17 dots on it.
Alderman Bessesi, Assistant Director Joel Carlton has her hand up. Maybe she has some information to share. Assistant Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. I do have some information. I think there are seven other. Let me back up. So there's the four that we're talking about that would become video gaming cafes. The fifth one, Shelby's, is, is a pending one. So it does not fall under the code's ability to be granted automatic special use approval as part of this because it doesn't have an existing liquor license. In addition to those five, so four of the existing and Shelby's, there are seven others that I believe were identified on the earlier maps that were presented to you at prior, prior meetings. One of those, I think it's only one of those, and that was the Picante's Mexican restaurant on Algonquin Road next to the stadium is, I believe, still pending. I don't, I don't believe they have received approval to get an accessory gaming at this point. But I believe that's how they would potentially be classified, you know, depending on our, our final review and moving forward. But they were included on the map, but I don't think they have been, I think they're still considered pending, if that helps.
That helps a lot. So, so I'm not imagining things then. We did, we did increase by five. The number of accessory gaming establishments.
The, we didn't change this number. This number 12 has been there for a while. But because of the fact that the gaming cafes are not going to be counted for that, those number of establishments, you know, what this ordinance does is allow for a total of 12 gaming accessory and a total of five gaming cafes. So it will allow.
It also allows, it also allows us to have five more accessory gaming establishments.
That's correct because of the fact that there are only seven accessory gaming establishments right now.
Okay, then I would propose we put this down to seven. Main reason is saturation of businesses that will have the gaming accessory within a particular area. I think that our residents would like to have a restaurant that they could go to without gaming in it. And if every restaurant that we have winds up having gaming in it, they may go elsewhere. So, I mean, we purposely, those, those whole areas then are pretty much moot. If we're going to allow five more, where are they going to go? We were limiting the number of total gaming establishments in each one of those zones. And I'm just concerned that, that there's going to be, there's just going to be too many of them, too close together, whether they're accessory gaming or not accessory gaming. And there, there's a fine line between the game. I mean, there's rules here and it's how it's, you know, it's very well spelled out what an accessory is, but I'm just concerned that 12 is too many. And it pretty much throws those maps out the window with the exception of the the gaming cafes. So that's just kind of my thoughts. I'm not sure how the other aldermen feel, but I truly feel that we need to reduce that number. Because now we're just asking for five more. So, that's it. And we can still, one by one, if somebody petitions, increase that number at some point, but for right now, I think it should be seven. And that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Veniziano, excuse me, Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Wolf, I had a question. We had discussed at the last COW, area four at this time would have zero gaming cafe license available. And I don't recall if we had addressed that. I believe it's area, I apologize, I'm looking at it. So for instance, say area two, if one of those gaming cafes were to close, could we at a later time as a council decide that? for this area, it fits our needs better to only have that at one? And then add that additional one to that Area Four since it's at zero? Do we have that ability?
Yes, yes, the, the city does have that ability to do that. I believe the regulations that you're talking about right now, where we're talking about the zones, are located in the zoning ordinance provisions. So what that would require of the city council, which is a very common practice, is to, is for the city to petition for a text amendment to those, to that provision of the zoning code to reduce Area Two, if that's what you're talking about, to one, and increase Area Four to one. Along those same lines, if someone wants to come in Area Four, as you, as you've identified it, it's a zero. So that petitioner would have to go for a text amendment as well. And this process requires the city council first to refer the matter to the Planning and Zoning Committee before a text amendment is even considered. So at the onset, the city council has the opportunity to say, we're open to reducing this, or we're not open to reducing this. And then kind of dealing with it at the front end of things so that if the council's not willing to, you know, open up for an area for an increase in a license, you can tell the petitioner right away and they won't have to go through that special use or text amendment process.
So, thank you. And to piggyback off of that, so if we have one of the cafes closed, can we as a council ask for that to be reallocated to that Area Four immediately? Since realistically, we'd like one in Area Four, but we allocated those five based on the current businesses we have, or do we have to wait for one to petition?
No, no, you, the, the city could petition. On behalf of the city, the city would be the petitioner and, and then it would be done. It would have to go through the hearing process because it's a text amendment, but it could be quickly accomplished. You don't have to wait for an outside third party petitioner to request that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. With that being said, I'm still okay with the five, seeing how we have to accommodate the current businesses that we have to include the gaming cafes that we have. And, and to kind of, I kind of disagree with Alderman Bessesi because the, the point of this license was to help our, our restaurants, you know, with that additional income. So to cap it at seven, I think if we had another business that, you know, that hurting extremely bad right now and they were to say, hey, even that extra couple hundred dollars a month could help us, you know, because they have one or two machines and, and we say, well, nope, sorry, we already have seven. I, I don't think that's quite fair. So as much as I don't also want the town a whole, you know, gaming, I, I think our original numbers are right in line to, to have that, that seventeen. Now, if everyone's in agreement to go down to ten for accessory, I'd be okay with that. But nothing less than, than the ten with the five additional cafes to equal fifteen. I would be okay with either or. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Director Horn, I saw your hand was up during Alderman Bessesi's time and I failed to call on you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just raised my hand because I wanted to provide a little clarification to Alderman Bessesi's questions. The map that was originally provided, again, was just to show the council existing establishments and establishments that have been proposed to staff. At the direction of City Council, I believe it was two committee of the whole, committee of the whole meetings ago, there was direction given to provide additional ability for accessory uses at restaurants who did not already have a gaming license. There were, I don't want to mention their names, but there were a variety of restaurants that were used as examples. And that's why we settled on the number twelve was to allow a, a business that maybe had been there for thirty years and just hadn't applied to actually apply for one and, and achieve a, a accessory license. So that was at the direction of this, of City Council at one of our recent committee of the whole meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn. Attorney Wolf, I see your hands up. I'll call on you before Alderman Bessesi again.
Thank you. And, and I, I do have another, another comment with respect to Alderman Bessesi's point. He does bring up a good point regarding the number of licenses. Now, what you see here for a GA license is a cap on the number of twelve. But what you don't see is that in the city code, for each classification, there is a number restriction on, on those licenses. So for instance, and, and those numbers are related to the actual licenses that already have been issued. So, and that was, if Alderman Bessesi, if you didn't bring up the point, I, I probably would have missed it. That's something that needs to be put in the, in this code. Because in Section six dash thirty-seven of our city code, it does identify the, the licenses. So for instance, it says for G1 licenses, there are only eight G1 licenses because eight establishments right now in the city have gaming. What we're going to do now is revise that so that G1 is going to turn into a GA and a GC. And the GA license number that's allocated will only be those seven that are existing now. You know, so the number twelve that you see in these regulations is the ultimate, you know, cap on it. But the licenses that are restrict, you know, the restriction on the number of licenses will be restricted to the actual establishments that exist today. I don't know if that, if I made myself clear on that, but, you know, so every time we have a license application come before us, the city council has to open up that license. And you, you guys would vote on an ordinance to increase the number of licenses for a particular license classification. That process will still exist.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. So after the reclassification occurs of all the existing establishments, then it will come back down to true numbers and those true numbers will be represented in our ordinances. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Alderman Bessesi, your hand is up.
Okay, I'll make this brief since it's my second bite. So given what this Wolf just men- mentioned, so would that mean the twelve is then lowered? That would be my first question. And then the second thing I would say is if the council would like to go to ten, I think that would be, that would be fine. I would agree with Alderman Veneziano on that.
So in answer to your question, no, the, the number twelve, that cap wouldn't, is not lowered by, by the explanation that I just discussed. But the license would not be open because of the fact that there is a restriction on the number of licenses in another provision of the city code. So, so, go ahead.
So would that number of licenses need to be increased?
Every time someone came to get a liquor license, yes. The city council would have to increase that every time someone-
Oh, for the liquor license, okay, which they need to have in order to get the the gaming license.
Correct. Now, with respect to your other question about, or your comment about ten being the cap, that's a decision that's up to the council.
Yeah, and I'll go with whatever the majority wants. But it's my opinion that, that it should be lower than twelve. Because that gives a total of seventeen establishments, as, as the mayor mentioned, in a, in a six-point, whatever square mile city, that's a lot of establishments. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Is there any further comment at this time? Or should, should we take a quick straw vote on the reduction to represent ten for establishments? Alderman O'Brien, your hand is up.
No, I think that I hit it by accident. That's where I was going, is if you wanted me to circle back to where I started asking if we could, as a group, lower to ten, but I literally was trying to move my mouse and my hand went up, so maybe it was ironic timing.
It was happenstance. It's perfect. Yeah, so at this point, then let's, let's do a quick straw vote. For those in favor of seeing the number adjusted to ten, please raise your hand.
It's ten gaming accessories, right, Mr. Mayor? Not ten overall, ten gaming accessory.
Correct. We're talking about the, the gaming accessory licenses. And I just have Alderman O'Brien and Bessesi. You can lower your hands now then. And those opposed? That's Alderman Budmats, Sanoika, Veneziano, Diastis and Cannon. Okay, so the straw vote represents no change in the gaming accessory licenses. Alderman Budmats, your hand is still up. Do you have comments? Nope. All right. If there aren't any further comments, what I'm going to do is open the floor. We do have one speaker on this subject. It's Charity Johns. We'll let her speak and then after that, we can go ahead and move on through this issue and on to the next. So at this time, Ms. Johns, if you're on, on the call, go ahead and unmute yourself and take the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Gallo and members of the city council. I hope all of you and those listening are safe and healthy and well. The last time I was able to address the city council, our organization had closed down all ninety-five locations amid the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm grateful that we've been able to safely reopen and welcome all of our guests back in the communities we are currently in. It is my sincere hope that we can also move forward with our Shelby's location in the city of Rolling Meadows. We appreciate the time and consideration the council has taken, again, even at this meeting, to draft the GC license and ordinance and some of the changes that have been made. I believe these changes will hopefully allow for us to join your business community. It's been over a year that we've been working on this opportunity with our landlord and with Barry and Martha at the city so that we could ensure we meet all of the requirements and get it exactly right. I did tell you, Mayor Gallo, that we would build an establishment that your town, or your city could be incredibly proud of. We will make that investment. We hope that tonight, that the council will allow us to move forward with our Shelby's location in the Plum Grove Shopping Center. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so any last comments or questions on, on this issue before we move on with the remainder of this evening's agenda items? Because the staff recommendations is that they recommend for approval and we can see this on the next council meeting for that. So Alderman Budmats. You might be muted.
Thank you very much. Which are the, which are the anticipated locations that would be classified as GCs, please?
I believe those locations would be Lulu's, Isabella's, Daisy's and Sally's.
And can I ask a question? Where does Big B's fit in to the, to the mix? How do they, I'm assuming they still have a gaming license? If they don't meet the restaurant, what, what do we call them?
They are still a gaming accessory, but a bar. So the, the gaming accessory license is allowed for their bar liquor license. I believe it's an A3 license. So it's an accessory to their bar license, being an A3.
Thank you very much. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Alderman Budmats. And if there aren't any further comments or questions, we'll move along to the next item, which is, for all intents and purposes, temporary sign enforcement modification. So for this, I'm going to defer to Alderman Cannon and Assistant Director Joellen Charlton. So Alderman Cannon, feel free to take the floor and give an introduction as to the purpose and intent that you had with this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see from my write-up, it's a very simple request. I think we all are very, 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 very aware of all the difficulty anybody that's been in business has been having the last three or four months. So I thought this might be a small way we might help them increase their visibility and hopefully generate a little bit more business for them. In my mind, it's a simple request. I'm guessing probably in some other people's mind, it might not be so simple. I deferred the staff on purpose because I don't feel like I'm vested enough or with enough knowledge. But I think Joellen and Barry did a great job of putting together some criteria that I think we can live with fairly easily. I, I have asked for a time, a limited time on this. I guess we could debate that timeframe if other people would like to, but again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I think it's a fairly simple, straightforward request. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Assistant Director Charlton, do you have any additional information you feel like sharing beyond that, which is in the write-up for this evening?
Um, just two main points. And, and as we indicated, we're supportive of efforts to help our business community kind of get back on their feet. A couple of items, I know the original request came in and, and some people talk about allowing signage in the right-of-way. And typically that is the area that includes everything from the back of sidewalk to the back of sidewalk. So as you know, a lot of times there is a grassy area between the sidewalk and the curb and that is considered city-owned or state-owned or county-owned right-of-way. And those areas are, are typically saved for signage that is intended to direct traffic. And we feel very strongly that allowing or introducing any signage within the right-of-way is not a good idea, both in terms of creating a lot of clutter and confusion, but also potential liabilities. Once we open that up, I, it's, it's hard to draw it back and then also consider what happens if a motorist hits one of those signs, then, you know, we have a whole new level of liability. So really, the only strong objection staff would have to relaxing any sign regulations would be to make sure that we do not allow them in, in the actual right-of-way. Once we get beyond that, I think it's a policy decision of, of the council. And we threw out a couple of things for the council to consider, both in terms of where the signage goes along the roadway and who might be qualified for that signage. And then also some of the temporary signage that is closer to somebody's front door. So I think there's kind of two main areas. In those two areas, that makes sense to identify or define some additional signage opportunities. You know, we all have our, our opinions about whether it's a feather or a floppy sign or banners or no banners. So I tried to throw as much of that in there as possible. We did take a, a brief drive in some of our commercial neighborhoods. And while some people are pretty responsible in putting up some of these temporary signs, we, we have a lot of people that just throw one up every ten feet. So I think we do need some restrictions on the books so that the signage that is going to be helpful to people is actually helpful and not just lost in a, in a clutter of signage. So I think putting some regulations in place will also help increase visibility. The only other thing I want to mention is, up for discussion again, is who is available to take advantage of this increased signage? Our proposal was to specifically focus on those non-essential businesses. So anybody that's been able to be open and operational since the restrictions took place aren't struggling nearly as much. So I kind of use that as an artificial boundary to allow the people who have been struggling a little bit more to get some of that additional visibility. But again, that's also a policy decision up to the discretion of the council. So I'm happy to take suggestions. If we move forward with this, I think we would treat it very similar to the way we created a draft ordinance for the council's consideration when we did the outdoor dining. So if we get some good direction, we could put that together in ordinance format and, and bring that forward to council. I don't know if we could do it for the next meeting, but, but certainly the meeting after that, we could probably have something drafted for consideration. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. I guess at this time, that's what we'll do. We'll open the floor up for any questions or discussion on, on this. Hands are coming up really quickly. So let's start with Alderman Veneziano and then Alderman Sanoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the only, I, I really liked all of this. The only thing I kind of stuck out to me was who was eligible. I mean, it says required restaurant, how does it say, only those retail and restaurant businesses required to remain closed during the early phases of the COVID. As we know, many of our businesses, especially our restaurants, they were closed- they were closed, but they did a lot of carryout and takeout. So I just want to make sure that we know with that wording, because obviously we want them to be included in this. So I guess I don't know if we want to change that wording a little bit to maybe like close to customers or patrons. I, I just wanted to address that because I would definitely want those restaurants to be eligible for this if they were able to do takeout during that early phase. And, and I totally agree with their duration with November 1st and reviewing this. I, I like that to kind of go with the dining, the outdoor seating, then we can always review this as a council kind of together. Those were really the only two, two things that kind of stuck out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Alderman Sinoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have two questions. The first is whether or not, and this might be something that Alderman Cannon will, might respond to, but it also will probably be something for our business advocate or the corner. Have any businesses expressed what they want to do but can't per our signing code? Because I, I want to ensure that that comprehensive insight is included in any of these code changes.
Staff have any feedback on this or Alderman Cannon? Is there anyone who can answer that?
The one thing that I would say is that we really haven't heard a lot from businesses, one way or another. Specifically, most of them have either said, we're putting a sign out there or they're not interested at this point in time that they're open. So there really has not been, hey, I need three signs, I need two signs. Right now, there's really not a lot of feedback to fall back on.
Okay, so then as a follow-up and without, without deviating too much from this agenda item, you know, I appreciate turning to our neighbors for inspiration and, and, and to understand what everyone else is doing around us, but I also think that Rolling Meadows has the opportunity to be a leader and, and go beyond signage. So I would ask what additional marketing opportunities are available to connect customers with Rolling Meadows establishments? Like that's a question for us as a council and for staff. I want the council to go beyond gestures and consider perhaps a more innovative problem-solving approach. So you know, we can consider what additional strategies are being provoked, proposed by the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce or other regional chambers of commerce, Chicago Northwest. And staff doesn't have to answer that now at tonight's meeting, but I would like staff and our business advocate to propose recommendations that the council can pursue to ensure that for those who are able and excited to do business, that they do business in Rolling Meadows. And that this code change for signage is included in a larger strategic plan for ensuring that our businesses are able to weather through the COVID-19 pandemic now and probably through 2021 and onward.
Alderman Sinoika, I want to thank you for bringing that up. Just last Thursday, I did have a conversation with Manager Crumstock on the fact that this sign campaign in its essence is, is noble and it's a good thing that we're trying to help provoke people to frequent these establishments. But we do know that, that the data shows that, that it's, it's not built on impulse where somebody's driving by, they see the sign and they deviate and turn in, but it's more on the campaigns themselves for marketing and advertising and messaging, right? And so last Thursday, Manager Crumstock and I were talking about that and we're going to try, we are trying to see what staff can do to leverage resources for marketing campaigns and how to get messaging there. Because the signs, unfortunately, it's nice that we're trying to come up with a suggestion or, or create more notice of these establishments, but that's not how a whole strategy works when it comes to, to marketing or getting patrons to frequent your establishments. And so the conversation is happening and it began last Thursday afternoon, but I appreciate you bringing that up tremendously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I also would like to add that I don't want this to be extra work or considerably extra work and time for staff either. I mean, many, many organizations hire companies to do this for them. And so if there's something else that's happening regionally that we can piggyback off of, you know, the thing I'm thinking about is the Takeout Tuesday campaign that, that Chicago Northwest does. And those are things that are, the structure is already there, the printing is already there. Like we don't have to reinvent it, we can just apply it to our restaurants, for example, to have that kind of a campaign where everyone just takes out food on Tuesday.
Yep. And, and we should just be the conduit that passes that information for, as a city to say, you know what? If you, if you're hurting or if, if your, your sales are low, you should look to partner collaborating with XYZ entity because they have these channels available for you. And that's how we could be better as a community for our businesses is by directing them to the right places or pre-existing campaigns that they can leach on to. So that's, that is exactly what, what we'll do without having to dedicate a lot of staff hours to, to any of this. Anything further, Alderman Sinoika, on that?
Nothing further at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And now just Alderman Veniziano hit on the, the couple that I had about being closed versus the, to take out only. And then I'm in full agreement with the November, I would support that, that we could align with that. And the other point to follow up on what you and Alderman Sinoika were just talking about, the economic development committees also talked about that just real briefly as we started to brainstorm. It did not take place at our July meeting, but as we do look at setting actual goals for the remainder of 2020 and then certainly strategical in 2021, a marketing campaign was discussed, not at the actual meeting, but just amongst council members of some potential, what goal ideas could be. So that's on the top of the EDC list as well is, because we'd obviously have to come prior before the committee if we were going to earmark any type of financial part to help with a marketing campaign. But that is being discussed. Ideally, if we're talking goals at the August meeting, it would be discussed at the August EDC meeting too.
Nice. Wonderful. Anything further, Alderman O'Brien?
No, thank you. Just again with Alderman Veniziano, so we can leave that to staff of how best we can word it so it could restaurants and places that, like the paint shop in the strip mall that stayed open for takeout service only, that they could be included if they'd want to be.
Okay, perfect. Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only point I want to make is that I, the, the complaints that I've received from residents regarding these types of signs, especially from gaming-type establishments, those were the primary, those were the primary focus of many complaints. And so I, and those businesses obviously were closed, so I don't, will their square footage requirement change as a result of this temporary? As a result of this temporary ordinance or waiver? Or will they still be required or limited in their number of square footage based on their gaming license?
Alderman Budmats, I'm sorry, are you, are you on the temporary sign subject? You're muted.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm on the temporary sign and so I guess the question is, is that I, I believe that signage for gaming establishments is limited by ordinance, whereas it's not limited for other types of license, of businesses. So the question is, are those limits going to be lifted as a result of this ordinance? Because those are where they, I've primarily seen objections.
Thank you for clarifying. Staff or Attorney Wolf, you have any guidance on that question?
The, the qualified establishments under this proposal are those that are, that were impacted by the closures implemented by the governor. So I believe those G1 licensed establishments were impacted. What we don't want to do is get into regulations that will be content-based. So if we start to pick certain establishments over others based upon the content of their speech, we're going to be running into some problems. So, uh, you know, like I said, to answer your question, this, those G1 establishments were closed during this time under the guidelines that are proposed here, those G1 establishments would be included in being allowed to have these temporary signs.
Thank you for that. And I see Assistant Director Charlton, your hand is up. Floor is yours.
I, I just wanted to comment because I'm, I'm not 100% clear on the, the liquor license signage provisions, either existing or proposed. I paid more attention to the zoning. But I believe all of the signage regulations for gaming cafes are for more permanent signs. And this code is specifically put together to address temporary signs and how we look at temporary signs in general. So we wouldn't propose that this short-term change to the code impacts permanent signs, like permanent window signs or wall signs, but instead those specific categories of signs identified in the zoning ordinance as temporary signs, which are typically limited in time. And what we're proposing for this code is that we would potentially allow some additional signs and numbers and sizes and types than we would otherwise provide currently under our temporary codes and allow them longer than the, the 30 to 45 day time period that we currently do and instead allow them till November.
Okay, yeah, I'm just thinking if somebody takes a temporary sign and attaches it to the building rather than out front in, in the lawn or something, that they might be actually exceeding what the liquor code calls for. And that's why I asked the question.
Anything further from the council on discussion of this matter? Any other suggestions, remarks? If not, then we'll, we'll continue with this and provide feedback to staff as it comes up, if any additional information does come up. With that, I believe we can move on to the next item, which is the local business assistance program policy discussion. And then I'll segue first with Manager Crumstock and then potentially with Martha Corner, correct?
Yeah, but it's really going to be me at this point in time. But just going back to that last one, August 11th, we will shoot for an ordinance for the temporary signage, what everybody mentioned. But before you use the local business assistance program policy discussion, obviously staff was asked to come back with an idea. This is based on Lake Forest and our current TFA. It's very short and simple. Hopefully you appreciate that we're just bringing this back. But again, we've not heard from any establishments that we're looking for. It does stay within the $5,000 of what we do talk about with the TFA currently and it does set up what the parameters would be, what it would be used for, how much it would actually up to, and then the procedures for the applicant. So there's really program options, but also we want to know if the council wants us to create this kind of program. If not, then we just move on.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. To that point and to the question, does council have a position or direction or comments on the creation of this program? Alderman Sinoika, first hand up. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at the packet and I'm on page 29 of the PDF. And I guess I would like clarification from staff on what's being proposed with these two. And in item F, there are two options that are listed. And could staff explain how option two is anticipated to, to work?
So this would be another alternate, instead of just doing the direct payment for the grant for what they're actually looking for, specifically if it was for rent, payroll or utilities, this would be a grant payment with the issue of gift cards. So we would actually give them money, they would actually provide gift cards to allocate for anything else that would come on there. So it's a little different feel. The first one is specifically that we'd be paying the rent, payroll, utilities, whatever comes up. This option two is a gift card that we would actually pay, but then they would have to use some gift cards to be provided to patrons, to residents, to actually utilize that grant money. So it's just a different way of getting the money, it's just how do they utilize it?
I mean, okay, so I guess what I'm struggling with this is how would those gift cards, who's distributing these gift cards? Is it the, is it the establishment that's in charge of distributing that or is it the city?
It would be the establishment.
Okay. And how would we confirm that they're distributing these gift cards?
It would just be by sight and also making sure what we hear and also confirming what is actually being given out and when they've been given out and when then returned, obviously.
And I, I suppose then, once they're given, if, so if they were to be given out to individuals, then is the expectation that individuals would, would return or would have to spend these? Because I mean, I feel like everyone has a drawer of a gift card that hasn't been used or not. Is, would that be like a, a knock against a, a business that were to participate in this program if we were to go through option two?
No, I don't think so. I think that we're trying to do is give them an opportunity to have repeat customers.
I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Sinoika. Alderman Veniziano, then O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, um, I'm sorry, I lost my place on my screen here. My question to this, I, I thank you for putting the program together. This is exactly what we were looking for. My first question is, who is going to be establishing the, getting this information out to the businesses? Because obviously this is, this would be brand new. Other than, I, I guess my fear is that we get this program established and nothing happens. And then business closes and another business closes. And we don't know that they were in financial, that financial despair until their doors are closed. So what is the marketing plan to get this information out to businesses?
Well, Mayor and City Council, obviously we have a list of who we send out our business newsletter to. As we know, we would obviously use that list to get that out and then probably the business advocate would actually do some visits to other places. So those are the two avenues that we would have to actually talk about the program.
Okay. And then a follow-up is I, I personally am very opposed to the option two. I think we kind of, me personally, I thought we were trying to get away from the gift cards and dispersing them. And I, I think if a business is in need of money to pay rent or payroll or utilities, that much like our family assistance, then we need to get them the money to do those things and not have to dedicate more staff time in worrying about gift cards and are they being used and distribute and, and whatnot. So, and I think it, if a business is coming to us as their last resort, they're in dire need and in emergent dire need. And so to have to take more time to disperse of gift cards and whatnot would be, would be more time-sensitive that a, a business may not have. So I am definitely, you know, for option one of, of giving the grant money to the business. And I would really encourage it if this passes through to, to get this information out to our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The only comment I would add is similar to Alderman Veniziano is I think Alderman Sinoika, I'd like to remove option two. I think the city's outlined it great is that we do have to see that they are behind in rent, a utility payment, just like we do for the family assistance program. And we treat it just like that. I think everything else was well-written. We just go off of option one. And then another thing too, is I'm guessing a way we may know too, is if an establishment might be behind on sales tax payment or entertain any of those taxes, maybe too. I know those are about three months in arrears, but that could be an indicator too, retroactively versus proactively like the business advocate or other communications reaching out. That might give us an insight into who might need some assistance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We started off this segment and Barry made a statement about the sign ordinance that we just talked about would not be brought until August 11th. I guess I would ask staff to either move that up to let the next meeting of next week or we stretch, stretch the timeframe for the things. Because if we don't approve this sign ordinance till the second meeting in, in August, that means our that means our resident businesses would only have two months to use the signs. Seems to be an awfully short timeframe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman O'Brien, you have more as your hand is just.
Just to follow to Alderman Cannon, that was my thought too, Alderman Cannon. I was wondering if we could request a waiver in the first reading was my thought of maybe how we approach it when it comes back to us so it could be effective immediately, like we've done with some other COVID-related items. But that's a valid point you had there also.
Okay, thank you. At this time, you know, let's just to make it quasi-official here. Let's see all those who are in favor of removing option two and the gift cards from this local business assistance program. So all those in favor of removing option two? It looks like it's unanimous. We have O'Brien, Bud Matt, Pesessi, Sanoyka, Veniziano, Cannon, and Diastis. So we, yeah, let's take out the second option of gift cards there. Any further comments or conversation on this subject? Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of moving along with what Alderman Cannon just said, I think some of our businesses could be in dire straits. So I would really like to see this on our agenda in front of the council as soon as possible so we could get this approved and so business could apply. Because it does take some time to get this information together and the program out and rolling. So I would like to see this as soon as possible in front of us.
So Manager Crumstock, I think you're getting the gist that the probability of putting this on a meeting sooner than later should be a reality?
We're trying and I'm sure Jo Ellen's typing hers right now on our ordinance. I'm trying to get a smile out of her on the video, but we'll get this typed up as much. And obviously, the city attorneys need to turn it back because again, our deadline is Thursday for that publication. So just bear with us.
Thank you. Anything further on this subject for the business assistance program? Assistant Director Charlton.
Hi, yeah, thanks. I gave a kind of a shocked smile. We can, we can work on some things. I do know, I can tell you that we've got two items on second reading and three items on first reading, or two items on first reading and a resolution already in the queue for Thursday. So if we bring it forward now, you know, it would probably be in pretty rough format. We got some good feedback, but depending on what council's review of that was, we could either approve it on second reading or just make sure that it's in the order that you want it and move it to second reading to the August meeting. So we'll do our best to put that ordinance together if you'd like it to be on the next council meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Alderman Sanoyka.
I just wanted to follow up with some comments that had been made earlier today, which was that no one in the business community has reached out explaining that they need assistance. And so if staff requires time to put the ordinance together so that it's not as rough, I would suggest that our business advocate begin the process of that marketing plan that Alderman Veniziano had suggested and reaching out to those businesses or perhaps working with Finance Director Gallagher to see which businesses have reached out for payment plans or other assistance to pay obligations to the city as a starting point so that they can be prepared for what documents were essentially asking for. And also to prepare any, because this program specifically is considered last resort, if they need to apply to other programs to demonstrate that they haven't received any, to do that process now while we are, while we're finalizing the ordinance so that they're ready to go once this is ready.
Okay. We'll see what kind of progress they can make. And I'm assuming staff will keep us apprised in real time as to whether or not they can make this for the next meeting. And if not, I mean, it is the 21st of July, August will be here soon. And if we need to push a sign date back for the signage issues beyond November, so businesses can have additional time toward the end of the year. You know, we'll be very malleable with this. And again, it's in the best interest of the business community to try and assist in their needs. And with this business program being a last resort, they're probably, if those businesses are in financial despair, they're probably preoccupied with other larger-scale programs than turning to the city of Rolling Meadows here for, you know, our maximum $5,000. So staff, just keep us, you know, in the loop as to how the progress goes by this Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka, anything further? Not really, so I'll lower your hand. You did it. You beat me to it. Anything else from council on this subject? Otherwise, we can move on to the liquor licenses. Seeing no other hands up, let's go ahead and move forward. Manager Crumstock, Attorney Wolf, we have the liquor licenses conversation.
I'll just start that with a quick summary. Obviously, you have before you a discussion about currently our code only talks about 12 months annual liquor license. Obviously, during this period of time, the stay-at-home order, you talk about each of the items. And in the packet, you see liquor code, liquor commissioner item 2020-01 and 2020-02. Each one of those allowed different items for establishments to be utilized. Again, promoting and following Illinois Liquor Code Commission with any of the extensions that were being allowed, but also allowing curbside deliveries and obviously prepackaged liquor and allowing certain businesses to maintain their operations of selling liquor. We looked at the city code overall and it really deals with A1s, A2s, A3s, and D classifications of liquor license that we're talking about tonight. And again, each one of these is mirroring what the Illinois Liquor Commission is allowing. So before the city council, just to keep a quick summary before I turn it over to City Attorney Melissa Wolf, it's really just three choices. There's do nothing, keep the status quo of what we have. And that would be following what the state said that all licenses are due by December 31st, 2020. They must be paid to date because they've had a period of months to actually do it. First staff recommendation is to provide more time to pay. This would be following what the Liquor Control Commission is providing for more time to pay. It's still a one-year. So whatever your current liquor license is still only good for a year, you're just getting more time to pay that additional time for your 2020, 2021. The alternate staff recommendation for consideration is extending the liquor license due from 12 months to 14 months. And that would only be again for A1, A2, A3, and Ds. And that would give a little more time. But again, that has some ramifications. One thing would be an ordinance change because again, as I mentioned, our current ordinance only talks about 12 months annual overall. And you can see from the scenario that we actually talk about what this would actually do for that. It's unfortunate that I've only heard now from three establishments about can I pay differently? Are you doing anything differently? Then, as the mayor knows, late last week, I did hear from Meridian Banquets. They're the most affected by COVID-19 because it does affect them. They have not been able to do anything that a restaurant is able to do. They are in the A1 classification. You cannot just carve them out. They are in the class altogether. But again, they're the most affected that is actually being done because they can't do anything that a restaurant was able to do and what the other resolutions that the state did and what the city did. But again, the other two, we're just inquiring one more than the other. Everybody else has just said, well, we're following the state and they've been paying as they come up in their thing. So there's a lot of information, obviously, that we put in here. We do appreciate all that's been done before, but this discussion is really dealing with those three options that we have before you. And with that, I turn it over to City Attorney Melissa Wolf. Does she like to add anything more?
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I have nothing more to add at this time, but I'm available for questions as they come up.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. Thank you, Manager Crumstock. At this time, with the three options that are before us here, are there any comments, questions, or concerns that council has that they'd like to address while the floor is open on the subject? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would be in support based on our discussion as a council. I think it was the last committee of the whole. It seemed like there was consensus on the potential expansion or extension until the 14-month. I would just want to confirm, and this might be for Attorney Wolf or Crumstock. I'm guessing this for consistency perspective, it would be across the board for any A1, 2, 3, or D establishment. Not even, not that they requested assistance or a deferred payment plan. From a consistency perspective, we'd have to do it for all. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's how I thought it was written in the write-up, but I just wanted to confirm it. We wouldn't, obviously, they wouldn't need to ask for it. It would be granted consistently. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, I know it says it includes license or Class D. Does that include or exclude the D1?
It's only for the D, so it does exclude the gas stations.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. In that case, then I am very much in favor of how this is written up with the extending it from 12 months to 14 months. Thank you for putting this together. I did not want those D1s included, so I wanted to clarify that. So obviously, I'm in favor of option three of extending it to the 14 months.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Anything further? If not, Alderman Diastis, your hand is up.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Veniziano. My only question is, were these businesses closed down for two months or three months? If they were closed for three months, then they couldn't use their license in 15 months would be better. If they were closed for two months, I'm fine with it at 14 months.
So some businesses only closed for two weeks. Some businesses made a business decision and didn't wait, didn't open until phase four actually allowed them to. So it's all Brad Bush. Some of them started doing the sales outside per 2020-01 and 2020-02, very specifically starting on that April early on. So that's where those two additional months, because that was really when phase three or whatever you want to call it, before phase four actually kicked in. But the same thing, that's where the two additional months come from.
Okay, then I'm good with.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from council on these? And if not, I'm just going to work in reverse order since it seems like the third option is the most popular at this time. All those in favor of pursuing option three, which is staff recommendation to extend the liquor license due date from 12 to 14 months? And this is great because it's unanimous. So we don't even have to go through option two or one at this point. So staff, if this is sufficient for you from a straw vote, then I think you have your direction on this. Manager Crumstock, we good with this one?
I was still muted, but yes, we're fine with it. And again, we'll get the ordinance typed up as quickly as we can, but we will also notify the businesses what's happening. So at least they know that an ordinance is going to be coming soon.
Okay, wonderful. Well, then this will move swiftly on to the fifth item this evening, which is Kirchhoff Road Walk Light Fixtures. And for this, we'll start with Director Horn. Director Horn, you can take the floor when you're ready.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I would like to give the floor to Assistant Director Charlton.
All right, relay.
Yeah.
Relay, tag, you're it. Thank you, Mayor and council. The item we want to talk about tonight is the walklights on Kirchhoff Road and get some direction about how to continue maintaining these fixtures moving forward. These very charming light fixtures have been along Kirchhoff Road, I understand, for over 20 years. And during that timeframe, we've been able, in the Public Works Department, to maintain them fairly well and get the replacement parts that we need when they burn out or the globes break. More recently, those two-piece globes, so right now, the original fixtures had a bottom part and a top part that kind of screwed onto the bottom to create the globe. And whenever a light went out, you unscrewed the top of the globe, put the new light in and put it back together. That fixture is obsolete and no longer available. So we're faced with a decision to decide whether we want to continue the look of those particular types of fixtures. And if so, we can get a one-piece fixture and continue that look that we've established. There's about 90, a little over 90 holes along Kirchhoff Road that we maintain. But we also wanted to take this opportunity to present the council with an alternative. I know a lot of people in today's world think about being a little bit more green and thinking about dark skies and other things like that. So obviously, with an open globe that doesn't have any shielding, that light is directing up directly to the sky. More recent public works departments are focusing on what's called dark sky friendly or focused lighting, where you have some kind of shields that direct the lighting downward and keep the sky darker at night. Lot of, lot of information on that if the council is interested in it. And I think you'll probably get some varying opinions about what's good and what's not. And it's very detailed. I mean, you can't just put the fixture in and call it good. There are certain types of bulbs and other things that you need to do as well. So if that is truly a desire of the council, we would provide our staff with information and resources so that we were achieving those dark sky objectives. I did provide a couple of alternatives, just to show you what those would look like. They're shown on the report, which is on page 44 of the agenda packet. At the top of that page, two different alternatives. If you want to go to a dark sky lighting, we picked those alternatives because they seem to be a little bit more in line with the cost that we would pay if we were going to go to the one-piece globe fixture. Obviously, there's hundreds of other fixtures out there, but we thought these were a little bit more cost-effective for achieving that dark sky objective. So the alternatives that I've outlined are three, and there's probably some hybrids of each one of these. But the first is to replace all 91 luminaires with the one-piece bulb fixture so that we match that appearance moving forward. And if we were to do that all in one year, we have a cost estimate for just the materials of about $23,000. If you want to have that work done by a contractor, we assume that that price would roughly double. We could also do that type of a replacement, but maybe split it over to fiscal or calendar year so that we do maybe half later this year, in which case we probably would need to contract that out just because the schedule is already in place. And then maybe do the other half next year and include that as part of our upcoming budget process. So we could, we could work it that way. The other thing we could do is decide that we want to go ahead and either all at once or over time, start to migrate towards a different fixture and move towards the dark, dark sky compliant luminaires. And I did provide the cost estimate to do that work again with in-house installation without doing a whole lot of work. Consider doubling that if we want to have that work done by an outside consultant. So really, the purpose of this discussion is to get some preliminary feedback from council before we spend a lot of time looking at alternatives and proposals and looking at how we're going to budget that and really kind of dial into what the council's priority is for how these lights look. So are we interested more in continuing the look that we have or changing to a dark sky look? So I think I'll leave you with that and see what kind of feedback we have before we talk anymore about what our options might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Director Charlton. Director Horn, I saw your hand pop up. So before I open up the floor to the council, feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant Director Charlton did an excellent job describing the issue at hand. The one point that I did want to emphasize as part of council's discussion is that the globes that we can purchase that are a different style than the ones that are currently there do pose a maintenance problem as a result of how they're formed. They have a hole in the top, which allows water and bugs to get in, which cause the light to burn out. They have a hole in the top, which allows water and bugs to get in, which cause the light to burn out quickly, more quickly than the current bulbs do. So I just wanted to make sure the council knew that. It is in the report, but I just wanted to make sure I noted that for the council's understanding.
Thank you for that. Alderman Cannon, I saw yours was the first hand to pop up, so I'll let you have the floor, and then Alderman O'Brien, following you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at these light fixtures like a lot of people look at paint for their house. People have different opinions on what looks nice and what doesn't look nice. Myself, I don't like, I don't like the look of these things. I don't think they're charming. Over the years, since I've been Alderman, on a number of occasions, I strongly suggested that we do some major streetscape program downtown. And up, up to this point, it's been kind of ignored. I think this might give us an opportunity to rethink how we light downtown, not just with these fixtures, but with their big fixtures. Most people have decorative lighting overall in their downtown area. I don't really look at ours as being very decorative. Though, again, it's, it's personal opinion. I don't mean to insult anybody or hurt anybody's feelings. I don't find these lights fixtures very pretty. I think there's all kinds of alternatives. I guess I would like to see in the near future, a more of a total plan of complete lighting on both the street level and on the sidewalk level. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to go ahead and say, and I did have one resident reach out to me, not a ton. Certainly, obviously, lighting's key along any area. And so following Assistant Director Charlton's thought, I was thinking maybe an option four is that we do go with the more, is it, they refer to it as a dark sky because it's the newer, the more efficient type program, but if we can do it over time versus just, because obviously, we don't want to double the cost now to get it done by year end, but that we could replace them potentially, any that are out now. Because if I was looking at it right and doing the numbers, I was doing some math here, it's about $100 difference per light. If we go with the old, the previous style, or the dark sky, or the other style, it's about a difference of $100 per fixture. So that would just be an idea I would toss out there as I do like the dark sky idea, but to spread the cost and replace them as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify, are we replacing, it's basically just the top part of the pole, correct? I'm seeing Director Horn shake his head. So this does not change any of our other, so like our holiday decor, our signing, anything else that goes on these poles, correct?
That's correct. It only changes what's called the luminaire, the bulb at the top. The whole pole from the luminaire down would stay the same.
Okay, and then I'm assuming that these new dark sky are more energy efficient? So we're going to save, there's going to be a savings in the long run as far as light bulbs or whatever? I don't know if they're LED lights. I don't know what goes in them exactly.
I know these new fixtures are LED, which are what we already use. We already switched to LEDs on our globe fixtures several years back. So how much additional savings there might be because of the change in fixture, I'm not aware, but I could find out for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for staff or a suggestion is to demonstrate or compare the dark sky light fixtures and their ability to pretty much do the job. That's the only concern that I would, that I would have is that things are being lit. If that's the case, then, then I would like to go forward with that. From the pictures that were sent in the packet, it looks like the dark sky lighting is actually more efficient at lighting pedestrian ways than the traditional light fixtures. So for those reasons, at this time, I'm in favor of the dark sky option.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. So I guess for me, a question back to staff, specifically for direction sake, are you looking for the council to define whether or not they want you to pursue a traditional style or going with this dark sky version and approach?
So I think I'm hearing there's a preference, and you might want to do a straw poll just to confirm that, but I'm hearing a preference for the dark sky alternative as opposed to the globe alternative. And then I guess, you know, the next question to council would be, do you want to be part of that actual design consideration? Do you want staff to, you know, work out a good deal and make sure that we address issues with efficiency and lighting levels and what, what we choose is okay? Do you want that to come back? I want to address one thing Alderman Cannon said, because I understand, you know, this approach looks at how we're dealing with lighting on Kurchhoff Road from a pedestrian scale only. In other words, our lights, these, these particular lights on Kurchhoff Road are not intended to be wholesale lighting. You know, if you go into some of the traditional downtowns, you'll see a light fixture, and maybe you have bigger Cobra heads on intersections, but typically, you don't have both the taller Cobra headlights and the smaller pedestrian scale lighting. I think that would be a very significant change that would take a lot of time and money to figure out if that is something that we wanted to do moving forward and could potentially, you know, put us in a situation where our current globe lights are burning out and we don't have a plan in place to, you know, keep the walk lit because we're not sure which way we're going to go with it. So I, I want to be careful, you know, to keep, our intent on this scope was to not change the wholesale lighting, but instead, just look at the pedestrian scale lights, let them continue to be kind of supporting the taller lights and just choosing which fixture we apply to it.
Okay, you know, I, I'm just summing back through this packet, and I can't seem to, to recognize any maintenance costs associated with the current style. And I don't know if that's because components are no longer manufactured, so it makes it a moot point. Or what, what does it cost to typically maintain what we currently have? Because, you know, the summary, the, the first paragraph here is, is staff's requesting feedback and direction from the council and whether to continue to maintain the Kurchhoff Road walk luminaries in their current globe style or to, to move on and purchase something new. So I guess I want to take two steps back and understand what the costs and what's involved with maintenance versus the necessity to swap out to something new? And then is money already allocated in a budget for these items? Or is this something that has to be budgeted for?
Very good question. So the existing, our ability to maintain these globes is no longer available because we can no longer get the two-piece fixture. So as, as bulbs burn out, as Director Horn indicated, we're able to replace those bulbs, but because the, the top fixtures are becoming, they have issues, then we're getting water and bugs in those fixtures and the, the bulbs are shorting out sooner. So we're, we're bearing a lot of costs now just on replacing bulbs in fixtures that burn out. If the globe itself breaks, we don't have any ability to replace that globe at all unless we go to a new one-piece fixture because the two-piece fixtures are now obsolete. It's, it's that question that we're kind of now to the point that we didn't want to start ordering one-piece fixtures to, to look like what we have and continue the maintenance of those until we got some direction from the council that that's a direction you'd like to go. I don't know what the, you know, the, the, the cost of that, I guess, would be the, the cost of the fixtures divided by 91. So, you know, that, that is the cost to buy the new globe fixture and place it one by one on top of each pole. The other thing I included in the report that's probably worth noting is if we go kind of piecemeal, because we don't have a budget identified for wholesale replacement or even half replacement now and half next year. We, we have money, assuming that we would just kind of maintains the one, maintain the ones that burn out in this year's budget. So doing something over two years makes a lot of sense. If we do piecemeal, in other words, only replace the bulbs as they go out or do a section at a time, there's a very good possibility that the lights will appear differently because the lighting levels with the different types of bulbs that are required in each fixture, even though the, the luminaires look the same, the bulb that you have to put in each luminaire is a little bit different for the globe. So you might get, you know, a slightly more intense queued light on, on the old fixture versus the new fixture.
Okay, thank you. There's a whole lot of.
A lot of data.
To share. Yeah, because I appreciate the flexibility, the, this current style affords us where we can replace the luminaire and keep the existing pole, where if we convert because one pole gets damaged to a single piece, then, then we're kind of stuck and committed to that, that, that single unit. The other thing is, you know, and I don't, I don't want to be a stick in the mud here, but $20,000 to $30,000 allocated toward lights. Don't know how often or frequent any of the globes have broken in the past, and knock on wood, they don't break going forward. But I would like us to be conservative in our endeavors here, spending, especially for, and I don't want to call lighting trivial, but we have sufficient lighting with these in place. We have additional alternative lights down the same street. And so whatever the council does decide to do, that, that's fine. But I just want to make sure what we do is either critical or necessary and not just desirable to this extent. And so I, I just, I want to keep those considerations in mind. And then as far as taking the straw votes for type, whether it's dark sky type, what have you, and then if the council desires to be involved in the aesthetic, or we'll put it to you, we will, we'll get to those. But I do see Alderman Cannon and O'Brien's hand up. So Alderman Cannon, I'll, I'll let you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. But I guess, Mr. Mayor, the question I would ask is, I appreciate all the conversation we just had about this, but you know, we're just talking about one element of downtown. And I guess the frustration I have is, so we're going to address one situation. It's part of a big picture, and we're going to make a decision that might lock us out of making things better over the long run. And we're just addressing just one hunk of it. I guess what I'm suggesting, I don't want to spend a ton of money either, but you know, we don't have a very good-looking downtown in a lot of ways. And this might open up the opportunity for us to start thinking a little bit larger instead of just replacing some poles. And we all can decide what light we like or don't like, but there's literally thousands of lights out there we could pick. I'm suggesting we take a little bit more broader view of it in light of the fact that we got a couple of new commercial spaces that are going to be east of Meadow now. Maybe the lighting should go down to there. I just think we're looking at this from really a small picture instead of looking at a big picture. Maybe this could give us the opportunity to make a new look, or at least start a new look for downtown. Thank you again.
What I'm hearing from you is maybe this conversation specifically to the lights is a bit premature in, in, as opposed to maybe a more comprehensive view of what we should do for our downtown Main Street. Is that, is that what I'm hearing, Alderman Cannon?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly what I mean.
Okay, thank you. Alderman O'Brien, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I was doing some of the number crunching here too. It sounds like you were doing, and I obviously can't, I don't know the specifics, but I'm sure Joe Ellen or Rob might, is if my math, back-of-the-paper math was correct, if we replace three of the new bar, or three of the old bulbs at about $70 apiece, that's a new light fixture. So I'm not sure how often we are replacing these. If we're replacing the broken ones or the hole in the top one where the lights are going out two or three times a year on a single one, it'd kind of be, in my mind, a moot point is because we're spending 210 bucks on light bulbs because they're about 70 bucks a pop now since ComEd took away the rebate based on the write-up in our packets versus getting a brand-new fixture that should hopefully not require us to change three light bulbs at 70 bucks a pop. So that was just my additional thought. No, Assistant Director Charlton or Rob, if you know if we are changing some of these multiple times a year where we're spending a couple hundred bucks in light bulbs?
I, in talking with our utilities division, I, I know it's just starting to occur. So I know that we, you know, obviously, anytime a fixture is out, we get a call and we, we go out to fix it or replace the bulb if possible. Those bulbs are burning out more quickly, so we are starting to spend more money just on the replacement bulbs. Again, as I mentioned, if the, if the luminaire globe, top globe thing is, is broken, we're not even really able to address that. So we probably would leave it dark for the, for the short term until we, you know, if we want to look at this bigger picture, we're going to need to provide some direction to the maintenance folks on, on how to, how to maintain it this year until we come to some more comprehensive decision. The other thing I'll mention too, and, and we had a, an opportunity to look at some potential grants. Apparently, ComEd may have some additional grants for this type of lighting. We tried to get into the system and, and ask some questions and didn't really get any answers to those yet. So that could change the way this conversation goes, obviously, if we can get some grant funding. But I, I believe that funding is available specifically for these walklights. I do not know if it's available for the big, broader project Alderman Cannon is talking about. But yeah, I think from a cost perspective, if we're looking at, you know, a half a dozen to a dozen more by the end of this fiscal year, that's probably a pretty good guess. Although, you know, I, I know that there's a couple by City Hall that seem to burn out pretty frequently. So I know we're replacing bulbs in those fairly often.
Thank you for that. I see Director Horn's hand is raised here on, on the virtual screen. So Director Horn, I'll let you jump in here.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for the council's information, we have approximately 20 burned-out lights in the downtown area along the Kurchhoff Road corridor. The big problem is not the maintenance for a single, addressing the pole one time. As Alderman O'Brien indicated, the maintenance cost is occurring because we're replacing the same bulb several times. And then, once we replace that bulb because we're having problems with the split globe, as Assistant Charlton said, because we're having problems with that split globe, we then have to buy another new type of globe that, again, does not protect the bulb in the same manner as the old bulb. So, or is the old globe, excuse me. So the costs are increased because we're sending guys out to the same pole numerous times for, for failures on the, on the light, light bulb. So, you know, that was, that really was the reason we brought this to council. We just thought it a good opportunity to look at updating the, the fixture to be more focused on pedestrian and be more using a dark sty, dark sky technology to improve the lighting in the area. So that's really the reason it was brought up.
Okay. You know what I'm going to do at this, at this point is I'm going to ask the question to the council, a series of questions, and want to see some hands. But let me see, all those in favor of allowing staff to pursue changing out these light poles or bulbs, you know, the whole light fixture, the luminaire up for the range that's been indicated in here from the $20,000 to $35,000? Show your hands if you are in favor of staff pursuing this initiative and going down this road. And so I see Alderman Budmats, Sanoyka, Veniziano, and O'Brien. Okay, you can lower your hands. And those who think it might be slightly premature and that we should look at this from a more comprehensive perspective with the larger street pole lighting and these shorter walkway lights. Alderman Diastis, Cannon, and Bessesi. So the first step is that I think staff has a, has a green light here in, in pursuing this. And then, you know, the, the next step is to determine which type, right? Do we, do we want to have just your conventional bulb or the dark sky model? So those in favor of the dark sky model, this, this greener initiative, this light pollution reducing initiative, those in favor of the dark sky. So we have Bessesi, Budmats, Veniziano, Sanoyka, O'Brien, and Diastis. And so that's good. That would leave Alderman Cannon opposed to that, but I primarily think it's because you, you're taking the position of more comprehensive view. Now, those in favor of having staff keep council informed as to the selection of pole for this dark sky model, those who want to have the council involved in this entire process. If you're in favor of keeping the council informed and involved, then show your hands. So that's Alderman Diastis and Bessesi. Those who would like to see staff go with it and bring back what they've selected, basically. Within that range that we agreed on, the 20 to 35,000 is indicated here. So that's Alderman, Sanoyka, Budmats, Viniziano, and O'Brien. And so staff, I believe it's, it's best if you guys just go down the avenue of pursuing those types that are dark sky incorporated and then bring back your decisions based on all the prerequisites that you've been working with to date. How does that sound for, for you, staff, Assistant Director Charlton, or Director Horn?
Very good. That's great direction. Thank you.
Okay. And then a couple more comments here. Alderman Bessesi, then O'Brien.
Okay, somewhere in the discussion, I believe it was, it's either, it was, I think it was Rob, but I'm not sure, said that there is a opportunity potentially for a grant. You know, I kind of would like to make sure that that avenue has been fully explored before we start doing anything.
And that was Assistant Director Joellen Charlton.
Oh, sorry.
And so I, Joel, I believe you will, you will look into that grant opportunity, correct?
We, we already have started that process, yes.
Wonderful.
Okay. So, so we know that it's definitely a, something that we can get. We just got to put the applications in.
We don't, I, I don't know that. I, I know there's an opportunity to apply for it. I've not been successful actually finding that it's still available. So I've got some calls in to make sure that that's still the case.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned because I know there's a lot of other expenses and we're trying to get to a zero tax levy. And I think every little thing we add in could mean that we do have to raise taxes. So that's really my thought there. Thank you.
Understood. Well, we'll maybe even see if there's other opportunities outside of ComEd that are, that might be available.
Thank you for that. Director Horn, I see your hand. Is that, you have something to add there?
Yeah, I would just, I was just going to reiterate what Assistant Director Charlton said. We will look at other funding sources. The other thing we will look at is the ability to spread this project over more than two years if there's a, a congruent way to do that, to not cause lighting issues for traffic. We will consider spreading it out over more than two years.
So I'm going to poke a beehive here and just say that, that you would have my, my blessing to look into some public private partnerships to find some lighting that are one, eco-friendly and two, small cell equipped to make way for the future of 5G and things like that. But controversial.
Good thinking, yes.
But there might be opportunities there for reduced costs if we do join into some, some P3 type initiatives with that. Alderman O'Brien.
Director Horn just hit on that. It was wondering if we could look at a couple of different financing options, making sure we do it in-house versus doubling the cost going outside. But Director Horn read my line and commented on the, we'll take a look at the financing options going forward. Thank you.
Perfect. Anything further on this from council and staff? Do you need any further direction or assessment from the council?
No, we'll take what you've given us and put something together to share with you at a later time.
Perfect. Thank you. That then brings us now to the sixth and final item, which is the original Public Works facility on Central Road at 3200. And that, am I kicking off to Director Horn, or are you going to relay it over to Assistant Director Joellen Charlton?
No, you're all lucky enough to hear from me on this one. Thank you, Mayor and, and Council. This item is being brought up really for, for two different reasons. I know it's labeled 3200 Central Road, and that is the primary reason we're bringing this to council. But it also includes the facility that council recently gave direction to staff to, to sell. And that's the property at 2455 Plum Grove Road. As part of a meeting we had with city council earlier this year, we talked about the importance and the potential to use this site for a transitional location. If we do develop long-term plans to relocate out of the 3200 central building, which we currently occupy approximately 80% of, into the 2455 Plum Grove Road or the old fire station 16 during the transition of whatever occurs long-term with that facility. Since that conversation, as you are all aware, we in Public Works have had to adjust our, our work schedules and our shifting and, and how we work. And, and as soon as the fire department moved out of this facility, we basically occupied it. We're running probably 25% of our, of our employees out of that building right now in an effort to keep crews separated so we can maintain city services in the event that someone got sick. In addition to that, as part of conversation I had with other department heads, I found that the IT coordinator indicated to me that we have what's called a required remote disaster recovery site is that station, which basically means it's got, it houses all the computer technology necessary to maintain all electronic city records and files in an off-site location. I believe that's required by the state, if not a larger organization. In, in initial discussions with the IT coordinator, the cost to relocate that to a new facility would be upwards of $100,000. Again, this is just information that I know the council didn't have when we had our original discussion. So again, I wanted to make sure the council was aware of what the site was being used for currently as we move on through this item and, and seek direction and input by the council at the end of the item. The, the second item, and, and again, the primary item for this discussion is the facility at 3200 Central Road. I know a couple Aldermen have met me on site in, in the past to review the building and look at its current condition and what we house there. As I indicated, we, the Public Works Department, maintain about 80% of that building stored with equipment, vehicles, trailers, and rock storage, hard storage, and the police department stores evidence. And, and currently, I believe, a vehicle that is being held for evidence that's required to be held indoors. So, excuse me, the building was originally constructed about 60 years ago. We've had the, the department, you know, before my time, had an assessment done, I believe in early 2010, which is attached to the council packet. Just of the exterior walls and the roof, at that time, there was a significant amount of work required just for those things. Shortly thereafter, I believe 2013, there was a more thorough assessment done and a budget was prepared based on assistance from an architectural firm. And that budget amount in 2013 was designed for a three-year program that was going to extend from 2015 to 2017 to bring everything up to current code so it can continue to be used for our Public Works operations and the Rolling Meadows Park District operations. At that time, the cost was expected to be around $1.7 million. Since then, we included about a 2% increase year over year since then. So we're, right now, we're at about $1.97 million in expenses that would be required to bring the building up to code. Just some history I learned in, in doing research on this project, the building at our current, excuse me, it's called Combined Services Facility that located at 3900 Birdneck Street is a, was built in 1996, 97. It was always designed with the understanding that it was too small for the site. In other words, there was an understanding that both the Public Works Department and the Rolling Meadows Park District would also share the facility at 3200 Central. So it was always designed smaller than what we could, what we currently needed. Currently, the Rolling Meadows Park District utilizes between 20 and 25% of the space at 3200 Central, and they occupy about 35% of the space at 3900 Birdneck. So the issue is, as I know Alderman Cannon knows this because he brought it up several times, the last time this issue was brought up was about two and a half, three years ago. And as a result of the priority being put on the fire departments, this, this topic was put on the back burner. But it's starting to get to a point where there are serious safety concerns for not only the public, but our staff. As I indicated, we are splitting our staffs into different facilities. We currently have five employees working out of that building every day. They report there and they leave from there. We have brick, bricks on the exterior facade that are regularly falling off as the photos show. And right now, my biggest concern is we don't have a plan for it. You know, and that's where the, the old fire station 16 comes into effect is not knowing what our long-term plans are with the building that's really on its last legs. I think it would be in the best interest, interest of the council to not get rid of a potential resource if something did happen that was out of our control. As, as the memo indicates, this is not a new idea. It's something that's been discussed probably for 15, 20 years, well before I got here. And that is the potential to start discussions with the Rolling Meadows Park District to see if they would be interested in the city buying out their share of the 3900 Birdneck site. Obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces to that discussion. There have been previous discussions with the previous director. They seemed at that time favorable, but as I indicated, those discussions happened right in the midst of city council making decisions on the fire stations. So we didn't think it was an appropriate time to bring that to council. I've had just some very preliminary discussions with Kevin Remaco, who's the new Rolling Meadows Park District Director, made him aware that this topic was going to be discussed at the meeting. And really, at this point, just want to know if the city council is in favor of us pursuing those conversations because as a result of those conversations, there will be funds expended. We will need to do some preliminary engineering to determine what size site, what size facility could go on the 3200 central site. And if not, what other sites would be viable as a Rolling Meadows Park District maintenance site if we were to buy them out. So that's the presentation. I tried to keep it as brief as possible. I know there's going to be many questions. So I am happy to answer any questions regarding either issue at this time.
Thank you, Director Horn. Last week on Thursday, when meeting with Manager Kremstock, I did ask him if, as you indicated, Director Kevin Remaco had been informed of some of the legacy conversations as well as being apprised of this most recent sort of scenarios here. And you said that you did get to speak with him briefly. Is he fully aware of the situation with the property and the agreements between the Park District and the city and maybe exchanging materials from our Birdneck area that belonged to the Park District, putting them back on the Central Road site and us migrating our way out of there? How much has he been brought up to speed with?
He's, I was actually pleasantly surprised. He had more information on, on the background of the, of the agreements and the facility and its use than I expected. So again, it was a very brief conversation. It was probably a half hour to an hour. We sat and talked about it. But again, what I made very clear to him is, you know, I, I didn't want to get engaged in any real conversation until the council said, you know, gave me some direction as to what they wanted to do. I was more concerned that he knew this information, he could let his commissioners know that the item was going to be discussed. So he wasn't blindsided by it, by not knowing about the issue. So other than that, bringing him up to speed about what was going to be discussed at that meeting, we have yet to have any real in-depth conversations.
Okay. Because I do think it will be valuable for us as a council to know how receptive the Park District is in either, you know, severing relationships and, and selling off our portion back to them or what have you. I think a lot of that information will be valuable for the council to help advise direction in addition to the, the information that you and additional staff are providing us is about how much space we need to move equipment and storage out of there and where ultimately it's best suited, whether it's over on Birdneck at Public Works, New Public Works, Newark, right? Or if it goes in the Plum Grove Facility. And I think we'll have to build the plane while we fly it in that sense. And if you can keep us informed as to how receptive the Park District is in any sort of transaction or, or sale of this, this building, I think that'll be important for the council.
And thank you, Mayor. And I, you know, I understand Kevin's a new director and, and things may have changed. I will tell you that the previous director, Amy Charlesworth, and I, we had lunch fairly regularly, and we had many, many conversations over the last two years. And I think quite honestly, they were more gung ho about the idea than, than we were at the time. But again, that's just speaking with the previous director. I don't know if she was speaking on behalf of the commissioners or just she felt that the commissioners were likely willing to support that. I, I can't speak to that. But yes, we certainly will find the mind of the, a Rolling Meadows Park District and relay that information to the mayor and city council.
Thank you. I think it'll be helpful. With that, Alderman Cannon, I see your, your hands the first up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a number of comments and a number of questions. I guess the first question I would ask Mr. Horn is, so with the comments you've made so far, would, would the direction you'd be leading this conversation to be that the Park District would take over the Central Avenue location and we would move all our stuff to Birdneck? Is that the way you're heading?
Yes, Alderman Cannon, my, you know, and it's going to take a little research, but the, the best case scenario would be for the Rolling Meadows Park District, well, the way the, the transition would work in my mind as I see it, if the site was able to be constructed on the 3200 central site, the, all the equipment would be relocated to the Fire Station 16 site. The 3200 building would be demolished, a new site, a new facility would be constructed. The Rolling Meadows Park District would then, once it was constructed, relocate their operation into that facility. And then we would relocate all of our equipment out of the old Fire Station 16 building into the 3900 Birdneck building. Therefore, our entire operation would be out of 3900 Birdneck, and we would not share the facility with any other entity. And at that time, the Fire Station 16 site would, would, we would definitely be in favor of, of the sale of that property.
But if that happened, you're looking at least years at minimum.
The agreement, the agreement with the Park District requires, requires two years. Again, you know, I know it was with the previous director, but she indicated the Park District does have the right to waive that timeline if they feel, if, if there's positive direction. I know that their operation wants to be out of the 3900 Birdneck facility. All of their sites, all of their work occurs off of Central Road and, and all the parks in that area. They definitely want their operation closer to those locations. So, but, but yes, you are correct.
Because I mean, is it, so if, if they were to rebuild an S site, they're going to get, you have to get the Army Corps of Engineers involved because of the floodplain issues. So that alone might take them a year.
Well, you know, again, I, I did a rudimentary drawing using GIS just to make sure in preparation with this memo that I wasn't leading us down the wrong path. And I can, I can fit at least a twenty-five-thousand square foot facility on that site and not be even in the floodplain, let alone the floodway. So again, I'm not, I'm not a professional engineer. I didn't survey everything. But based on our, our FEMA information that's on our GIS, I, I, there is a building that could be put there. But again, yes, you're correct. It would take some engineering to make sure that there would, we were able to build what the Park District wanted on that site.
Okay, I guess a personal opinion would be I would suggest we start that discussion tomorrow. That's just a personal opinion. Going over to the other facility, I guess I would like to express some frustration. I'm not sure who wants to take this, but you know, we just got done building two brand-new fire stations. When we originally approved those, we knew we would be selling two other fire stations. And why we haven't made a contingency plan up till now for the emergency backup system is beyond my understanding. There was budget money available for it. We actually had people from staff sit in front of us, our council, four months ago, and wanted to buy a piece of property at the corner of Kirchhoff and Hicks because they wanted twelve more parking spaces so staff would have extra parking when they had the emergency center in the Hicks station. So I'm completely confused as to why this thing has just sat there and no one's addressed this until tonight. Because to me, someone's just completely dropped the ball on this. And I don't know who, who's at fault for it, but why we, we shouldn't even have to be having a discussion about this. This project should have been done already. Does anybody want to take it?
I, I, I can just quickly answer on behalf
Well, you're not new, but you're not an IT guy. Why isn't the IT department, why aren't, why hasn't that stuff been moved already?
He might be here, and I'm not sure.
So I can say, obviously, well, Seaman Kelly are broadcasting, but at the same point in time, I can tell you that part of our old plans were to move all that stuff to Public Works once we had a location to put it there. And obviously, what Rob's talking about, if the Park District vacates, we know exactly where it needs to be moved and everything like that. But it was always part of our emergency plan not to put it in the direct line of one of our stations because we do look at how far we are in the Birdneck Street is that location that was the safest. It was also part of that emergency plan, but we have not moved anything at this point in time because, again, we don't have the room in Birdneck. We could always force things into Birdneck, but we were not trying to do that. But it was always the plan to make Birdneck that next step, that backup for City Hall. And again, when we draw that emergency circle, Birdneck is farther than any of those other pieces.
But I, but I don't understand, Barry, why are we having this conversation now? Why didn't we know about this months or years ago? Because we knew that the stations were moving. We knew that the odds of you keeping sixteen, at least we, a lot, a lot of us thought that that project, that station would be sold. So we knew we had to move it. And now we really don't have a plan in place right now. We have a theoretical plan, maybe. And that seems to be a really important issue. If it's a backup emergency program, we need to have something up and operational. And it sounds like we're at minimum years away from doing that. So that means you want to keep sixteen now forever. So now instead of having just two fire stations, two old ones, we have another whole building we have to own and operate.
No, that's not what we're saying. And again, we do have a plan.
You confuse me. Educate all of us to what you're coming from because I'm getting really mixed signals from this whole project.
So again, the plan was always in our emergency to move items to Public Works. Just like if something happened here at City Hall, the first backup is obviously Public Works that we have set up, but also the new fire station, we do have that set up for that pieces. But the technical IT items were always to be moved over to Birdneck because, again, farther circle of where the emergency, if a, and again, when we look at farther circle, it was also how does a storm come? How do some of the other pieces come in? But again, we've had some of those discussions. We would not put where we have our IT equipment in Birdneck right now in its own standalone area because it's the backup for everything else. And we could put that in there. It's just, again, in our rhyme and reason, when we looked at it, the emergency pieces and all the backups, it was always redundancy. And we have multiple redundancy how we do these things, but it goes back into down the line how we were going to set up the building and overall emergency planning.
Mayor, if I could add one thing, I don't know if, if the IT coordinator is available, but I think one of the issues as well, relocating that hardware, is I believe it's required to be at least a mile away from your existing primary site. And I believe it's required to have backup power supply. And we do not have backup subpower, power supply at Birdneck. We had intended to do that two years ago. You know, I, I don't know how that plays into this, but I think the reason it's at Fire Station sixteen now is because there's a backup power generator at that facility that can provide backup power in the event of an emergency. So again, I, I, I won't say that that is the, is the only factor or the overriding factor, but I think that is something that is required for that remote hardware system. But I don't have the specifics of that. That would be the, an IT issue.
Thank you for that. I think Manager Krem-
So Mr. Mayor-
Hold on one second. I, I understand that. And there, I think there's, there's two issues going on here. One of the issues that's preventing you from getting an answer is that we have our, our backup systems that handle our data. And I think Manager Kremstock needs to have a conversation with IT and understand why we're not looking at putting that at a, an above-property data center where they have the appropriate securities and the appropriate power and all the criteria that we need rather than keeping it on premise in one of our locations like other municipalities do in this case. And then two, get back on the question as to why we've been so reactive with this instead of planning, knowing that the day would eventually come. So
I agree. I agree with all that. And I guess the other question, well, the other comment I would make is, you know, one of the other questions that was asked in this whole, this whole process here was whether we want to hire an engineering firm to do another evaluation on Central Road, which I am completely against. Anybody that looks at that building understands that that building has to go. We don't need to have another analysis of it and spend more money. Everybody knows the building's fallen down. We were not going to spend two or three million dollars to remodel it. Let's just move on and go to the next step. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Alderman Bessesi.
Well, Alderman Cannon pretty much brought up almost everything that I wanted to talk about. I was also under the impression that both fire stations would be able to be sold through, you know, prior to me joining the, the council. You know, I've paid very close attention to the whole fire station thing. I was also under the impression, and I could swear, at some point, it was mentioned during, during council or committee, the whole, that IT stuff was going to move to Station sixteen. I believe the mayor brought up a great point. About another alternative for that IT stuff. As far as Station sixteen and keeping it, I would not have an issue with keeping it if it was part of a plan as Rob spelled out, where we would be eventually moving everything to Birdneck, hopefully within the next two years, and getting everything out of that central building. You know, frankly, I'm afraid that thing's going to fall down or get a giant hole in the roof or something. Because I've been in that building several times and that was, that was quite a few years ago, and I don't think it's any better than it was when I was in there. Now, the one other thing that I thought was being mentioned in favor of keeping Station sixteen was that as soon as the fire department was out, it would be a good location to put all the police evidence and everything. Last factor that I'm wondering about is we just spent, you know, several hundred thousand dollars on the property next to City Hall. So I'm kind of concerned, I mean, by the time we're getting, we get that whole thing in place the way that we want it, we'll, we'll have spent a half a million dollars probably. At some point, we need to get some money by selling some of our property. So I would be in favor of keeping Station sixteen if we were progressing on a plan as, as Rob spelled out. But I think there needs to be, you know, a date that we need to be, you know, milestones. And if we don't meet those milestones, then we just need to sell the building and get money. Because I'm very concerned that things like COVID and, and other obligations that may pop up are really going to deplete our reserves. And, you know, it's going to start to affect our city services. And, and we'll be forced to have to sell property and do what we can in order to continue to provide the things that we do for the city and to continue to employ everybody that we employ in the city. So I know I'm being a little extreme there, but I'm just a little frustrated because, you know, as a spectator, before I was on the council, I could swear I heard the prior council hash almost all of this out, how we would be able to sell both buildings fairly quickly after we moved out. And it was all when everybody was trying to justify all the money that was spent on those two fire departments, that we, we would recoup some of it by, by doing that. So that's just my thoughts and you can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Vinesiano and then O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is to staff, that expense, because this is the first time I'm seeing it, the expense to move the IT equipment, where is that budgeted? Is it in the Firehouse fifteen, sixteen IT department? Where is it budgeted?
At this point, it's not budgeted to be moved during 2020.
Is it budgeted in 2021 yet?
In the draft budget, we're working on that.
Okay, so to follow up that, I, I guess to go with Alderman Cannon, that's pretty alarming to me because when these firehouses were voted on, you knew the equipment was in that firehouse and it needed to be moved. If we were selling this, this building that staff had asked us to put on to sell, you'd be then asking us to approve a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to move this equipment quickly in a, in a firehouse that was very controversial in, in building to begin with. So I, I am with the other aldermen that I have been in Central Road, and I'll be honest, I was afraid to walk through there. It is falling apart. And so the fact if the building is falling apart, we have, I would assume, millions of dollars of equipment in that building. It needs to be stored. And so I'm not opposed to holding on to Plum Grove Firehouse right now to store our equipment in the transition of the next year to two years and not move the IT equipment until there is a better plan in place and it is budgeted properly. The fact that we went through a budget of this nature just a couple of weeks ago and other aldermen didn't want to question a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and now we have to find another hundred thousand dollars is just upsetting to me. So I think to hold on to the firehouse right now on Plum Grove Road and, and move the equipment and move forward with the Park District. I am opposed to spending more money on doing the facility assessment. I think we all know that the building's falling apart and I'm not interested in spending any more money on it. And, and let's move forward with the Park District. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Vinesiano. When we do get through this round, we will do the straw votes on the direction paragraphs that are indicated in here. Alderman Bessesi, your, your hands up again? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I'll make this, Mr. or Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll make this real quick. I'm with everybody else. I say, Rob, go ahead and make the phone call tomorrow to Director Remaco over at the Park District and let's see what we can do for Central Road. Because yes, I think that's actually becoming much more of a huge liability for any government entity, us Park District. That's gotta be, we've got to get out of there as quickly as we can. And then I know in the write-up, there was something about the lea, or the lease and the ownership and something that was done in nineteen ninety-six. I'm referring to the Central Road now is, have we confirmation? It could be in the many years of notes in our packet. Is it a hundred percent owned by the city? Because I know NWSRA is in there now as well. They store twenty-three buses in the back, I believe, is what was in our write-up. But was there a joint agreement? I know there was some discussion through all the minutes that we were included in our packet is, do we know rightfully the city does own one hundred percent of that? And obviously, being nice neighbor of government entity, we're working with the Park District as we hope to continue to do and collaborate with them, being a great entity as well. But it looked like there was not a clear answer in the write-up from all the past council notes from ten, three, five years ago, when it was in our packet.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman O'Brien. If I can answer that question, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
The, the way the agreement is, establishes, the Park District owns the land, one hundred percent of the land. They have a lease with the special recreation to use portion of their land or the bus, buses. The City of Rolling Meadows owns the actual facility. So, and they, the Park District utilizes about, I think we, as part of the billing agreement, I think we charge them fourteen percent for use of the building and then, which also deducts a percentage that the Public Works Department uses in the site. So again, it's a, it's a very concise but very clear agreement that we certainly can work with the Park District on. The other thing, Mayor, if I could answer Alderman Cannon's issue from earlier, and actually Alderman Vinesiano brought it up as well, I want to make sure the entire council understands, staff has no interest in doing another assessment. When I referred to engineering, it was to do engineering to show the Rolling Meadows Park District that a facility could be constructed on the site and not encroach flood, floodplain and floodway regulations. That, that is something that I just wanted to make the council aware that there would be some preliminary expenses related to the discussions with the Park District because we have to be able to show them what their needs are, will be able to be met on that site.
Thank you. Thank you for the information and for the clarification on certain things. Alderman Budmats, your hands up.
I'm just curious if there's any contingency money left to, to use for the fire stations to move the, the hundred thousand dollar cost to move the communications or the computer equipment to the Station sixteen where it was originally going to be moved from? Because I don't know what the contingencies were, but hopefully some of that's still left.
There is contingency. There is, there is contingency.
So enough to move all of that then?
If we were to make that decision that we are moving it into the station. But again, part of the emergency management specifically says that it needs to be far enough away, and that's why Birdneck Street was identified to move it to there.
Honestly, I think the, that, that should be a broader conversation at a later time. And if we have to relocate that hardware, I think IT should drive a lot of that conversation. And we should also look at an above-property external data center where we can do it appropriately, like a lot of other municipalities and other governmental agencies. When we're talking about relocating it, it's probably the, the best route to go for a long-term approach. So, but we're not, we're not necessarily on that right now. I know it's kind of contingent in this subject, but at this point, one, Alderman Budmats, I want to make sure you were finished or if I need to continue allowing you the floor.
Oh, I, I yield my time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And then the next part is to give staff some feedback here on these two portions of direction that they're looking for. The first one is they're seeking authorization to begin more The first one is they're seeking authorization to begin more serious conversations with the Park District related to potential buyouts. I want to see a show of hands from the council of those in favor of allowing staff to pursue those more serious conversations. Those in favor are Alderman Budmats, O'Brien, Veneziano, Bessisi, Sonoika, Diastis. Unanimous for you. And then the other question on top of that is additionally, that staff would like to encourage the council to reconsider the speed in which we're trying to sell 2455 Plum Grove Road property, which is former Station 16. Again, this is something that we're not, from what I'm understanding, we're not satisfied with having to put the brakes on that. But I think there were some ill considerations or no considerations at all at this point in time, which now forces to kind of hold it. But I need to see consensus either way from the council on, let's say, holding on to the property of Station 16, former Station 16, to allow staff in the city time to, I guess, effectively go through with the buyout and maneuvers of these properties. Is that Director Horn, is that a fair way to say you need Station 16 in order to, to perform these buyout, the maneuvers and buyouts for juggling equipment or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, you know, our, our initial thought would be to hold off on the sale till we had a long-term plan. But in addition to that, it is our understanding, as some of my research showed from when the 3900 Birdnik was, property was constructed, the cost of off-site storage or rental is, was astronomical. So given that the facility is there already, that, that would be the ultimate ask of the city council would be to hold off until the transition period took place. But obviously, we'll be in discussions with city councils throughout the process and they can choose to change their mind on that matter at any time.
Okay, so for a quick barometer, I'm going to ask Alderman Cannon, just hand down for one second. I just want to see the council show your support to acquiesce on slowing down on getting rid of the former Fire Station 16. If you approve staff the time in the short term, and obviously this is fluid, but if, if you're okay with allowing staff additional time with that property, those in favor of allowing staff additional time with that property instead of hastily selling. So we have Bessisi, Budmats, Veneziano, Sonoika and O'Brien, who are okay with slowing down on the pace of selling that property at this time. Those who are opposed and want to see staff in the city move forward selling former Station 16, show your hand. Alderman Cannon. And then Alderman Cannon, you can lower your hand at this time. And I did see Alderman Bessisi, you had a question or a comment. So in this closing minutes here, we'll let you use the floor.
It's moot at the moment, so never mind.
Okay.
Then we've done the straw vote, it's, it's kind of a moot point.
Okay, wonderful. Alderman O'Brien, in these closing minutes here.
Sure, and this is just Director Horn, you were saying, I mean, it's better than to rental space, but everything based on a space assessment, everything that's currently in the central building could fit into Station 16 for an 18-month period or whatever it is. Or would we still, because I would not want to see additional costs incurred. Would not everything fit in 16, so we'd still have to be renting space someplace?
No, Alderman O'Brien, we would not ask the city council for addition, additional funds for the transition. We may need to get creative in how we store things at the 3900 Birdnik site. Or we would probably come to city council and request, or through the Planning and Zoning Commission and request a temporary outdoor storage of equipment in, on our 3900 Birdnik site. But we would not look at any additional storage beyond the Station 16 site.
Great, thank you.
All settled, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Wonderful. Alderman Cannon, I see your hands up.
Mayor, one of the questions I want to ask before we took the vote, is there any way that we can put a timeline on this thing? So it doesn't just go on forever? We put like a 24-month timeframe on it? Because you know, this thing could just drag on and on. And then, you know, a lot of the members that are here tonight might not even be part of the council when that, they decide they might be done with the building. I guess I would like to really see a timeframe on it. And then whatever that timeframe is, six months before we could put the product, put that building on the market, the sooner we get rid of that, the sooner the city's going to be better off.
So that's, it's, it's fine to put some parameters around this in terms of duration. It keeps a little bit of applied pressure. Director Horn, do you think you or, or additional colleagues of yours can come up with a reasonable timeframe? So the council has some expectations of what we're looking at here? So we can go ahead and discuss that at a later date. Can you get us those parameters for duration?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to request, Mr. Mayor, is if staff could put together a timeline for the city council to look at at a future meeting. I would expect it within the next prime two months, at the next committee of the hall or the one immediately following.
Okay, that way we can all be on the same page for reasonable expectations here to execute these action items. And then finally, lastly, Alderman Budmats, closing statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It feels to me like, like we're kind of taking this whole thing in a piecemeal approach. We, we built some fire stations and now we're discerning a need for, for additional space or revamping space. It feels like we should really have a comprehensive facility plan for all of our buildings before we, we move ahead with whatever's going to be next, which, which would, we're taking into account all of the properties that the city owns and all of the needs that the city presently has. And, and so I, I don't want to go back to the well five times, I guess is the point. And I kind of feel like I'm getting nickled and dined. So it'd be really nice if there was a comprehensive plan that said, you know, step A, we'll say step A was the fire stations, but, but, but before we take whatever step B is going to be, we've been, it'd be really nice to know what, what step B, C and D are. And then when we get done with D, we're done. And so if that means a little extra planning as far as, you know, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what all of our facility needs are. I mean, is it possible that we, we might be able to get away with using the other fire station for storage? If, if Plum Grove is more saleable, I, I don't know. But I'm just trying to say, we need to have a comprehensive facility plan. And it just kind of feels like we have a reactionary facility plan right now.
That's it. Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I know that conversation came up when I was an alderman on, on the fourth ward, when the former Dominix property, prior to it going to condos or townhomes, was for sale. I had even brought up the fact that we need to explore a comprehensive property plan, because we, we know we could use storage space. We've known that for decades, that we're out of storage space and that conversation was brought up then. So I agree with you that I think staff should look at this going forward from this point on, so that we're not doing it in such incremental steps that have no systemic value to the next move or the previous move. Any further comments or questions from the council before I look for a motion to adjourn? Don't raise your hand for a motion to adjourn yet, but Alderman Veneziano, you have a comment or a question?
It's a comment, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I think Director Horn got all his, his answers in, in moving forward. But I, I do want to put to staff on whether it be Finance Director Gallagher and, and Manager Crumstock, that I, I have to tell you this IT topic really kind of threw, it sounds like many of us off here in not knowing where it's budgeted and it's not budgeted. So we know that the plan is that we will sell the Fire Station former 16. Where is that going to budget in and, and what is the plan for that? So I would like to see that plan as well, moving forward.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Anything further?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Then at this time, if there is nothing further, I would like to see a motion to adjourn, show of hand. Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. At this time, because the way we're doing things, I do need a roll call vote on this. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessisi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sonoika?
Yes.
That motion to adjourn has been unanimously approved. And so on that note, I will see you all later and have a wonderful night. This meeting's adjourned.